I am calling to order the Select Board meeting of September 15, 2025, at 7:15 in the Selectments Chambers, covered by ACMI. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, consistent with provisions in state law for remote participation in public meetings. I will now confirm that all members and staff are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please answer in the affirmative. Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Staff, when I call your name, please also respond in the affirmative. Town Manager, Mr. Feeney?
Here.
Town Council, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Board Administrator, Ms. Marr?
Yes.
Before we begin, please note the following. This meeting is being conducted in the Select Board Chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcasted on ACMI. People wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name and place of residence in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Both Zoom and participants and persons watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. If technical difficulties sever the remote connection to one or more of the participants, and efforts to reconnect within a reasonable period of time are unsuccessful, the in-person meeting will continue at the discretion of the Chair, provided that a quorum of the Board is physically present. Zoom participants are encouraged to retain the phone number provided in their confirmation email for a backup audio connection to the meeting. There will be the following opportunity for public comment at tonight's meeting at open forum. If you are attending by Zoom and want to participate, please raise your hand in Zoom when I announce that public comment is open. If you do not know how to raise your hand in Zoom, now would be an excellent time to Google for how to do so. And finally, because one or more Select Board members, one, are participating remotely, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call by Town Council. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. Next, before we get into the agenda, I do want to read the land acknowledgement, which was passed by Town Meeting as a resolution and a recommendation. Myself and Ms. Marr have reached out to our Diversity Equity Inclusion Director, Rumscha Beluch. I always say it wrong. I apologize. In terms of different days that are recognized throughout the year, and a quick Google search shows Native American Day, this is something not from Rumscha. Native American Day and American Indian Day is traditionally the Fourth Friday of September, which would be September 26th this year, and other indigenous recognitions occur in September, such as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 30th, which is a Canadian observance gaining recognition in the United States. So therefore, I have chosen to read the land acknowledgement at our September meetings. It reads as follows. "We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts Tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts Tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today." Thank you. I will now go to Agenda Item 2, which is our proclamation for Hunger Action Day. Andy Doan and Farah Shafi?
Doan.
Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Farah Shafi. I'm an Arlington resident and a member of the Board of Directors at Arlington Eats. And we are grateful for the Select Board and the town of Arlington's continued support in raising awareness about food insecurity by declaring Hunger Action Day on September 25th in Arlington. Hunger and food insecurity are real and urgent needs in our community, with one in five Arlington households being food insecure. And at Arlington Eats, we serve over 500 families each week, but we're only meeting the need for a third of the families. In my work as a physician, both with direct patient care and then also in the health plan space, I have seen the effects of food insecurity on patients' health. So we encourage every resident to do some action, one action or activity this month. You can donate food, volunteer with a local nonprofit, do a food drive in your neighborhood, or advocate for policies like WIC or SNAP. We invite, there's also two events that I want to raise awareness for. We invite everyone to attend an event on Thursday, September 25th, at 7:00 PM at the Robbins Library. We're going to be collaborating with True Story Theater, so where we can explore the impacts of food insecurity on our own community. And then the second event that we want to raise awareness about is our Second Annual Turkey Trot, which is going to be happening on November 2nd at Hills Hill. So we invite folks to join us, to walk, to run, and just raise awareness and critical funding, so we can help make sure that everyone has access to nutritious food in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I call on my colleagues, I'll read the resolution, which says, "Whereas an estimated 20% of Arlington households, 3,890, experience food insecurity; and whereas federal changes to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, are projected to put approximately 656,000 Massachusetts families at risk of losing some or all of their food assistance, further straining households already experiencing food insecurity; and whereas these changes were also increased pressure on the Commonwealth and on community-based organizations that provide critical support to people in need; and whereas the town of Arlington recognizes that Arlington Eats, Arlington Council on Aging, Food Link, and the Arlington Public Schools work in partnership to address food insecurity in this community; and whereas Arlington Eats is serving more neighbors than ever, the market served over 500 households each week in the past year, a number that has more than doubled in the past five years; and whereas the Arlington Council on Aging, COA, acts as a transportation partner for Arlington Eats and has provided 2,069 rides to the market in the past year at no cost to the riders; and whereas in 2024, Food Link rescued 1.6 million pounds of food, the equivalent of 1.34 million meals, and distributed it to 120 community partners throughout the greater Boston area. And now therefore be it resolved that the town of Arlington encourages any resident in need of food to call Arlington Eats at 339-705-6761, or visit arlington eats dot org, O-R-G. And be it resolved that the town of Arlington encourages residents to support efforts to alleviate food insecurity by volunteering and donating money or food when they are able; and therefore be it resolved that September 25th, 2025, shall be proclaimed as Hunger Action Day in Arlington, and that all residents are encouraged to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance." Take a motion to approve by?
So moved.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins. I do want to thank you for doing this. I was at an event this weekend, and we were talking, there was someone there from, that had started, cut their teeth in Arlington, at Arlington Eats, and we were talking about it, and I was saying, when I grew up, my parents, we always had to rent and lived in monotony manner, and there wasn't any Arlington Eats or Food Link. It was literally sort of finding restaurants that, oh, you're going to throw that cheese or eggs away because you're closing Saturday and not opening until Monday, or, oh, a nice restaurant, Charlie at Arlington House of Pizza, would give you a pizza for $1 for four kids, live cheese. The need has always been there, and I'm really proud of the way that you and others have found a way to respectfully address it, because I know as someone in need, you definitely appreciate the help, but sometimes you don't really appreciate being advertised about it.
Exactly.
I don't want to say used, but.
Right.
And it also makes it, I think, easier for you when that fear, anxiousness is taken away, and you're better, I think you probably find you're more able to help people then?
We do, and we try to present a very dignified experience for people, so they're not, you know, there's such a stigma, and I, as you said, the need has increased, it's only going to increase. And so, thank you so much.
And thank you for doing this. I appreciate it. On a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins, any further questions and comments? If not, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thanks.
We'll now go to the consent agenda. Hispanic Heritage Month banners from our Diversity Equity Inclusion Director, acceptance of funds from various entities, from Anna Litten, Director of Libraries, request contractor drain layer license, Environic Solutions out of Waltham, Mass., request for a special one-day beer and wine license, October 17, 2025, November 14, 2025, December 19, 2025, January 23, 2026, February 27, 2026, March 20, 2026, April 17, 2026, May 15, 2026, at the Mill Cafe for Mill Cafe after hours. A request for a special one-day beer and wine license, September 20, 2025, Robbins Memorial Garden, for Arlington Town Day Beer Garden, Katie Luzai, our economic planner developer out of the planning department, I apologize for not getting her position correct probably. And a request, special one-day beer and wine license, September 28, 2025, at Robbins Memorial Town Hall for Stratton Family and Friends Social, by Danielle Dean. Do we have a motion?
Move, approval.
By Mr. DeCoursey, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd? Any comments? Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I'd like to say the banner, it is beautiful. Yeah, I don't know who created it, but it's really quite beautiful. And secondly, respect to the donation to the library, is that an extraordinarily large number? I'm just not remembering. I know there've been other donations, but I mean, that's a pretty hefty number, I mean.
It is. I don't think, Mr. Diggins, that I could speak to it historically, but of course, it is very generous.
Yeah, so thanks to the trust for doing that. So that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Any further questions and comments? On a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Town Council?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
I just wanted to let everyone know, I'm usually very informal, as you know, but for purposes of the record, purposes walking in, watching at home, as well as if someone requested a transcript, it's easier when the speakers are announced. The fun part is when I interchange their names, so we'll have to see. There's a lot of H's and D's for last names. We'll now go to appointments, the Parking Advisory Committee, Anton Rabatov and Vincent Boden. Anton Rabatov's term to expire January 31, 2028, Vincent Boden's term to expire June 30, 2028. And if you could both start off with your interest in the committee, and anything else you'd like to tell not only us, but everybody else here or watching at home?
Hi, I'm Anton Rabatov. I myself, I'm a compiler engineer, so, but I also, I live in Arlington, I care a lot about Arlington. I'm already a part of Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee, was appointed, what, like, two months ago or so? I don't remember. So I live in Arlington Center. I really enjoy how the Arlington Center is designed, like, to what degree it is. And the parking is generally available, and this money, I can see they go to some plants, to sidewalks, that are well managed, especially relative to other parts. Yeah. So I would be happy to serve the town in Parking Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Vincent Boudouin. I've lived in the town for about five and a half years. I agree, I think, when you think about how you get around town, and also when you think about how we use our land, parking is really where those two things come together. And so it's so important for the downtown business merchants, it's so important for the residents who are trying to access businesses or visit friends. But it's also important to, you know, make sure that we're taking the revenues from that and using it to improve the neighborhoods where the parking is happening. And so I look forward to serving on this committee and helping the Select Board make decisions as possible.
Thank you. The Town Council, I assume one vote will suffice, or should we take two separate votes?
One vote will suffice.
Okay. So I'll turn to my colleagues.
I'll move approval. Welcome to the committee, and to say, you're lucky you didn't serve it when it was called the Parking Implementation Governance Committee, because it was hard to even tell people what committee you were serving on. Park Advisory Committee is much better.
Is there a second, Mr. DeCoursey?
Second, yeah. I want to thank you both for your willingness to serve.
Yes, we, thank you very much. We, as you know, probably some interesting things that we can do with parking, especially, you know, in the East and the Heights. I think we're maybe, we may be proceeding to do a study, you know, on another parking benefit district, you know, in the East, which I think would be exciting, you know. And, and, I have to say, I didn't know of your connection to New Orleans, and in particular, Biloxi, Mississippi, which is where my mom grew up, you know, I mean, four years in Biloxi, I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty intense, so, and after Katrina, I mean, I'm sure it was even more intense, I mean. So thank you once again for both of you joining.
Thank you. To the Town Manager, I think this committee needed two more members. Where are we in terms of the committee status, and have these two gentlemen saved the day so we can move forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Even after these two appointments, I believe we still have, I think, at least two vacancies. So we're still taking interested parties.
So, any efforts you can do for that? It's not a requirement. We also have been, I think zoning board of appeals, we may have a few people, but the Board also has been advocating for some committee openings, so. But really excited to have you, and as my colleagues have said, spreading the success story of before this was largely centered in the center, and I think he's starting in the Heights with this committee and expertise and anecdotal history to draw upon. Hopefully, we can continue doing great things for not only the businesses, but the residents who live here or who will move here. So, thank you so much. So we have a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
Thank you. We now go to Agenda Item 10, licenses and permits for approval, outdoor dining and retail permit license, N.C. Arlington LLC doing business as New City Micro Creamery. Is Mr. Kareem El Gamal here or on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
You could just say your name and business for the record, and just give us a description of what your request is, please.
My name is Kareem El Gamal, from N.C. Arlington LLC, doing business as New City Micro Creamery, and I'm here applying for a parklet.
At 311 Broadway.
At 311 Broadway. That's right.
Thank you, sorry. Just housekeeping for the record.
I appreciate it, sure.
If you want to do it in front of 23 Howard Street, my kids and grandkids would love it, but anyways. Sorry. Turn to my colleagues. Mr. Diggins?
Motion approval.
Moved by Mr. Diggins. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. DeCoursey.
I just, I mean, just looking at the map, I just wonder if there's any, any benefit to having the two parklets next to each other versus one car in between? I know it's probably more proximate to the store, but, you know, I mean, we're going to undertake a pretty significant discussion going forward about how we do parklets, and like we had said, you know, a couple weeks ago, when the Rush Bowls Parklet came in, that, you know, what we grant now can't, isn't always going to be there, and, you know, this is a lot of parking spaces in Broadway Plaza that I think we're going to take a look at. That said, I support it, because again, we've approved all the parklets that are requested. But I didn't know if anyone had comments on whether or not it makes sense to push that over one spot. So again, it just seems a little awkward to me to have one car between the two parklets.
An answer to Mr. Hurd by Mr. Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. In fact, we had discussed that, though there were no departmental comments to that effect, that was something we discussed this morning, and is why we prepared this visual in the event, the Board had an interest in putting the parklets next to each other, because I agree that that sort of parking spot, once the barriers are placed on either side, you could face door obstructions. So in that event, it may be best to have the proposed two spots for that parklet immediately adjacent to the parklet the Board recently approved for Rush Bowls, and thereby moving that empty parking spot, as shown on this diagram, to directly adjacent to the plaza, and then therefore the driver's side door would never have any obstruction.
Yeah, and I assume it can be structured so something less than a barrier is between them, to create a little more space for the, for the two parklets anyways, right?
Yeah, that remains, that some other type of stanchion system may be available, we would leave that up to the applicants to decide, because we can only provide the orange plastic.
Or it's just one barrier instead of two.
Yeah.
So either way, it's going to create a little more space.
Yeah.
That would be my suggested amendment to the motion.
So with that, first I see Mr. El Gamal nodding his head, yes, I believe in agreement on that.
Yeah, I think if you guys, you know, when we applied for this, there wasn't anything set up yet, and therefore I completely understand your point, and that's fine with us.
And it's a very good suggestion by Mr. Hurd. I would ask Mr. Diggins if he would be amenable to amending his motion to include?
I'd be happy to do so, especially since it seems like the Rush Bowl people and the Micro Creamery people will get along.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, I agree on my second as well. And if I could ask a question, Madam Chair, just as a reminder again, what's the date that this runs through this year? It's a date in November, but.
November 15.
November 15, okay. And, and just as Mr. Hurd said, I mean, as a matter of fairness, I'm supporting this, but I think, just want people to know that we probably will be examining our policy for next year, but between now and November 15th, it, it, it only seems fair to allow this.
And just to give a preview to my colleagues and everyone, since the parklet, although it goes to November 15th, October traditionally has been starting with COVID when we open it up, for people to apply for parklets, so we will have the parklet discussion on our October agenda, also bearing in mind that, from what I'm told, and the manager can correct me if I'm wrong, that the, a lot of the parklet, orange buffers, et cetera, a lot of them are coming, it appears, to the end of their shelf life, parklet life, which is also a somewhat substantial cost, and we'll need to discuss that moving forward. Am I correct with that, Mr. Feeney?
That is correct, that we will start needing to replace a certain number annually.
Okay. So any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, as amended, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we now move to, good to see you. We now move to open forum. So if anyone here in the chambers, and for anyone at Zoom, you can now raise your hand in Zoom. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the Board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to speak on the open forum? Ms. Marr?
Seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Seeing no hands. Open forum. We'll go to Traffic Rules and Order, Other Business. First, we're going to have an update on long-range planning, which to kick it off, I'm shockingly not going to really say anything at the beginning, I'm going to ask our colleague and also Chair of the Long Range Planning Committee, Mr. DeCoursey, and then our Town Manager, to present a report to the Board and the public. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so last Friday, the Long Range Planning Committee met for the first time since June to discuss the five-year plan. The Long Range Planning Committee historically was designed to assist the Town Manager in the budgeting process, to also talk about the five-year plan. There are representatives, two representatives of the Select Board, Mrs. Mahon and myself, three members of the School Committee, there's members represented from the Finance Committee and from Capital Planning. And at the meeting last Friday, Ms. Feeney and our Deputy Town Manager, Ms. Wayman, presented the latest five-year plan, and what that shows is, we will project it, get through fiscal '26, but for fiscal '27, right now, there is a deficit of approximately $7 million, and that will grow over time. And so what, what was discussed is what's going to happen with the budgeting process for fiscal '27, but also the need to request voters to approve an override. And unfortunately, you try to avoid that as long as possible, but it appears that next June would be the date that that would happen. This Board will decide that the end of the day, but when you look at the numbers, whether this deficit is closed or not for fiscal '27, we're going to need to ask voters and in the meantime demonstrate that the, that funds are being spent wisely. The other thing that we discussed is, because we're entering a critical period with budgeting and planning, this group will meet monthly through the end of the year. The next meeting is somewhat critical, because we will have school enrollment figures, we also will have our free cash certified, and so that may impact the deficit for next year. But I think we're, we're in a critical phase budgeting-wise, it's going to be a challenge for all of us, but I think the feeling was, we need to get this out here and discussing it with people, because frankly, I don't see another way than not going to voters next June. So with that, I'll turn to Ms. Feeney, if she wants to add anything.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. To elaborate on a few of those points, you know, I want to, of course, thank Ms. Wayman for her work diving, writing, to helping prepare for Friday's meeting. We have been a bit more aggressive in our revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year, especially with respect to our local receipts, which have certainly rebounded since the pandemic, and have more than stabilized, and have begun to grow. So we've been a bit more aggressive in our revenue projection to that respect. We've also been building a bit of a balance in the overlay reserve account, so that's something we published as part of the long-range plan on Friday, and that's something, is a refresher that is under the auspices of the Board of Assessors and will require a vote of theirs to release, you know, a prudent and reasonable number as we prepare for the fiscal year '27 budget. So that coupled with, again, sort of historically strong free cash generation, which we hope to certify, as Mr. DeCoursey said, later this month, from June to September, the deficit has decreased by roughly $2 million. However, that deficit is certainly there and looming. A few other notable changes that you'll see in the plan, so student enrollment forecasting has become exceedingly challenging, as it is difficult to predict when students will move into the district, so that's, you know, in addition to tracking birth rates and who may grow into the system and go through the system, we've seen an influx, especially of high school-age children, perhaps because of the new high school. So to reduce the volatility associated with those changes, we have assumed through the course of this five-year plan, stable enrollment. So what that means is, you will see projected school enrollment growth at the bottom of the version provided, zeroed out for each of the coming years, and what that will do is, of course, you know, we don't project it to be exactly stable, but we have been projecting fairly significant declines in the number of students over the coming years, and enrollment projections are seeming to indicate that is not the case. So this should reduce the volatility, or I guess the magnitude of any swings if we were to either increase or decrease by a small number of students. It's easier to do so from baseline. And then on the appropriation or expense side of the ledger, if you will, most all of our assumptions remain the same, but we continue to most all of our assumptions remain the same, but we continue to see significant pressure from some things that I think we're all familiar with as being those things that are significantly outpacing revenue growth. So those would be pensions, health insurance. We're projecting probably our third consecutive year of double-digit health inflation, where our the premiums that we pay as an employer on behalf of employees are expected to grow again by a double-digit percentage, probably around 10%, but we won't know for sure until we get some preliminary estimates from the Group Insurance Commission of the Commonwealth in approximately mid-December. And as always, special education as well is one of those costs that grows fairly rapidly, usually on the order of magnitude of double-digit percent increases. Obviously, all of those things well outstrip our ability to grow under proposition two and a half plus new growth. So I think those are some of the highlights that I wanted to offer this evening.
Mr. DeCoursey?
And if I could add one more thing to what Mr. Feeney said. He talked about the deficit being reduced by about $2 million since June. Back in 2023, when we had our last override vote, the projected deficit for fiscal twenty-seven at that time was $15.4 million. It's now seven. So there has been during that period movement to reduce it and even further in the last several months. But with the challenges that Ms. Feeney raised in the timetable going forward, it's going to be very, very difficult to reduce it further. Thank you.
And I do want to say that the town manager and superintendent certainly are always have been engaged in conversations, but also in terms of looking at the current budget, even putting override aside in terms of looking at every number in every place in terms of cost saving. But it's really very difficult, as the manager, Mr. DeCoursey, highlighted with health insurance, and I'm not picking on that because that's a basic core benefit that we offer our employees. But traditionally, we've built in about 5.25, 5.5% and this year, it's about 9.25 and probably will go up into the double digits. So there's a big number right there. And there's other conversations in terms of, you know, as pointed out to our colleagues on the school committee, that the special education budget at 6.5%, that that really needs to be looked at going forward. Because if you really take it out to thirty-three, thirty-four, I mean, this will take us to about thirty, if that number stayed like that and continued to grow, it could overtake the town general budget, general fund budget. And then also, the current town manager, which having served under five of them, this is the first time I've really seen, along with the then treasurer and now deputy town manager, finance director, Ms. Wayman, has done everything they could in terms of getting us some interest bearing on opera funds over the course of the years, the money from the debt exclusion, I mean, from, yes, from the debt exclusion for the high school and others, but all that's going offline. So and we all know this. I'm just trying to explain that to the public. And I also wanted to just note, in the abundance of caution, and I'm not announcing anything, but since I am up for reelection next year, I made it a point not to have any discussion or vote in terms of when an override vote would be, which ultimately is this board's final decision in terms of a date and an amount, as well as promises, as we've done in the past, to the voters. So there was talk of the local election, a May date, a June date. But there was also noted that under the contractual obligations with our teachers and professional staff on the school side, as of June fifteenth, that's when that would be the very last day if we had to do any kind of RIF notices, pink notices, including on the town side. Not that anyone wants to do that, but we do have to follow the law as we always do. So before I take comments, I will take a motion by Mr. DeCoursey. Move receipt?
So moved.
Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Hurd. And we will, from this point going forward, Mr. DeCoursey and Mr. Feeney will make these materials available on the website. Any questions, comments, laments from my colleagues?
I'll just say it's a good thing Mr. Feeney negotiated a favorable trash contract to save us some money over the next few years.
That's for sure. Mr. Diggins?
So I have no laments because, I mean, as I've often said, I don't want to view this process mean as something being negative and to be, no, no, to be dreaded. No, 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 that's fine. No, no, because I mean, generally, it's our approach. It's like we we approach this with a sense of fear and dread. And the reality is that the two and a half puts us in a position where there is a structural deficit and we have to raise more money, you know, in order to provide services. And I would like for us to view this as more of an opportunity to have a conversation with the community about what it wants, you know, because we have to pay more. And I think to a large extent, it's not appealing to pay more to get the same. I think a lot of us would prefer to pay even a little bit more on top of more to get more, you know. And so I think it's the opportunity to have a conversation with the community and say, what is that more that you want? And how much does it cost? And whether we put a menu out or by conversation with the community, we decide, okay, this is the option we're going to put out in front of folks. If we have that conversation, I think, I mean, instead of it being something that we dread, it's more like, okay, this is what we're going to do. And maybe instead of thinking of it as something that we put off as long as possible, we get people thinking, you know, every three years or so, we're going to do this. Because if you do the math, it will amount to less if you do more frequent, small overrides than if you do large infrequent ones. And so as I said, let's just think of it as an opportunity because, I mean, a lot of the negative voices tend to be loud and scary, but they don't tend to be the majority of people. I mean, I think most of us, we realize that it just takes money, you know, to do things. And so you either pay for it, or you pay the cost of not having it. And often, the cost of not having something is even greater, you know, than the cost of just going ahead and doing it. So no laments, we just boldly move forward and get this thing done. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lower my hand here. Just a question on the on the out years of the long range plan. Thank you to Mr. DeCoursey and to the Chair and to to Mr. Feeney and Ms. Wayman for laying this out and the careful work for this. So I appreciate Mr. DeCoursey's reminder that as we zero in on the next year, that the projected deficit tends to get reduced quite a lot, and that's a function of our conservative assumptions that we that we make far out. And I think that's excellent practice. That's, I think, an important point to make to the public, that the out years always look pretty scary. And, you know, I've heard a lot of people saying, coming up to me and saying, I hear we're going to have a $20 million override next year. And I keep saying, no, it's actually very likely to be a lot less than that. I explained it. So, you know, I'm glad that we got this down to 7 million. And, you know, I know that we're still being careful and conservative in those estimates. My question is, like, if we look at the other out years in this document, on like, if I twenty twenty-eight, and that's, you know, that's 23.22.3 million and change. And obviously, that will be reduced if we do pass the override next year. But without that consideration, do we have any, do we have confidence that, knowing what we know now, that those future out year deficits would also similarly get better as we get close? Or has something sort of fundamentally changed?
Mr. Feeney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A fine question, Mr. Helmuth. I think one of the things that will that you allude to in terms of, you know, conservatism in the estimates that does change with as each fiscal year approaches is the process we go through for the certification of free cash in terms of using 50% of what we've generated on the following year's budget. But then each of the, what we call the out years, so in this instance, from fiscal years twenty-eight through fiscal thirty-one, rely on a 10-year trailing average of free cash because it's sort of a just a historical, a conservative, historical look back. But I think, in my mind, as we approach those years, that's the number that's probably most likely to change if our, the immediate future of our free cash generation looks more like our immediate past than the number that we'll be using as a revenue source in the following year is likely to grow. Beyond that, I think many of our assumptions say for health insurance are, they remain the same in the out years. And of course, there's the one item for which we project 3.5% growth annually for the Minuteman Schools. That is a budget that's not necessarily under the purview of the manager or superintendent. So to an extent, we are at the whim of that, of the Minuteman Vocational Regional Technical High School District for the generation of that budget. But the assumptions in the out years are as they have historically been.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. One last question, Madam Chair. The other factor in all of this is new growth every year. And, you know, I think the town has made some strides in zoning and its economic development activities and frankly, just coming out of, you know, COVID and in developing some properties that have a higher property value. And some of that can just be a home renovation or replacement. Some of that can be new building, mixed use, tall, you know, some taller apartment buildings and all this. Are you and your team building that, building the best projection we can about what new growth will get us in those out years? And it's probably going to be the sooner the closer out years than the later ones, obviously.
You know, that is, thank you, Mr. Helmuth, another great question. That is one of the elements where, at least for fiscal year twenty-seven, we actually have raised our new growth projection to the, frankly, the highest it's ever been. So we are being a bit more aggressive on that front. But in the out years, the assumption in the plan is that new growth will then start to subside by roughly $50,000 a year. So that's something we typically will not revise the estimate for until we start to gather some projections. What I will say, we have seen less new growth in the past two fiscal years than we had seen perhaps in fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four. And our, what had been our bread and butter, single-family and two-family home construction, like those new builds in peak years, we had been seeing, I think it was around, on average, 27 new construction starts. In the past year, we've been down in the low to mid-teens on that front. But we are starting to see a pipeline of projects resulting from the passage of MBTA communities' overlay districts. So there are four projects currently in the pipeline with the redevelopment board there. So if those were to proceed and we were to see sort of some higher density development on those parcels, that is growth we would begin to see or capture in the FY28 timeframe. So if those sort of reach permitting status, that's something that may cause us to revise our estimate to potentially at least hold it level instead of putting it on a decline.
Yeah, yeah. And we don't want to count our chickens before they're permitted in rolling. So that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the discussion because I think it is, again, important to help help everybody understand that there are variables and we have to, we have, we've been kind of lucky in past years that a lot of things have gone right. And that has to do with the state of the economy and good management by the town and good decisions by town meeting. So, you know, that may not always be the case. There may be some years where they don't and things get worse. But I think it is helpful to remember that that things often do tighten up favorably with this. That said, you know, I'm certainly not here to say that we're not going to need to do an override. That's just reality because our expenses to provide services go up higher than two and a half percent a year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If I could add one more thing too, and you had made the point earlier about override commitments. And so and probably one of the most important commitments we make when we ask for an override is that we will not come back to voters for a certain period. And in the last override, our commitment was we will not come back until fiscal twenty-seven. So this this is the period as envisioned by that last plan that we would come back. We were fortunate with prior overrides that that period got extended. So for example, back in fiscal nineteen, we said we won't come back for four years. We ended up getting an extra year effectively. It became a five-year override. So so this is consistent with the commitment. It's consistent with the spending that we laid out a few years ago. And I think it's important to make that point because it's part of the plan. We're not coming back early. We're coming back in the first year that we said we would come back.
I guess the other thing I would leave with my colleagues that we, I've had discussions at the Long Range Planning Committee with Mr. DeCoursey, Mr. Feeney, and everyone there, as well as individually with the town manager. And Mr. DeCoursey's, in terms of commitments moving forward, I'd like people to start thinking about that. Two of the things I raised at the Long Range Planning Committee that Mr. DeCoursey and I discussed there, as well as, Mr. Feeney's no stranger to having this discussion with all of us, is if we could consider the money from CDBG for the Council on Aging, they're sort of, well, first of all, CDBG money, federal funding. I know the manager already had a plan if we didn't get it for this year. Not saying anything that I have a crystal ball and know anything, but I also know that money could not be be there in the future, and we should plan for that. But even putting that aside, I think we need to make a more permanent commitment to the Council on Aging, to their staff person, to the transportation that is covered by the CDBG, as well as to the Community Development Block Grant Program for the services that currently exist with Fidelity House, Monotomy Manor Boys and Girls Club that we never can fully fund. Mr. Hurd knows this. He's the one that helps us get there when we have to cut back and can't honor their basic requests. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes.
As well as we're really not able to fund, I think we've done one in the past four or five years, a new program. And I don't think we fully funded that. We.
Yeah, it's hard. I mean, there always seems to be a lot of money to give out, but not in the specific areas that we have a limit on how much we can give. And, you know, I think you alluded to, we had a discussion about this, some of the Council on Aging positions that are important, and if there are other ways to fund them, to allow us to have a little more flexibility with the program request. Because we want to, part of the application process is to weigh new programs. But we might be veering a little bit off scope.
No, but that's in terms of when we're talking about commitments. And I know Mr. Hurd and I, you've heard it on the CDBG Subcommittee, the Council on Aging, you know, they have to wait and hold their breath every year to make sure what's going to get funded. And I'd like to have a conversation about that, if that's perhaps a commitment, along with traffic calming. I understand and I commend the town manager for when we had the incident at Park in Oakland, and then we had the incident at Park and Wallaston Paul Rivera, where two of our residents went to high school, junior high, middle school. Sorry, I'm showing my age. I went to junior high when I was in high school. And really, that was a three to five-year process with what we have set out in terms of funding and everything. And the town manager was really able to, you know, do a lot of legal, creative, moving the projects around. But we shouldn't have to do that in the future if we can avoid it. So anyways, I digress, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what was discussed at the meeting. We'll have more discussions in the future. And I want to commend Mr. DeCoursey. There were a couple of lively conversations back and forth, and everyone knows I'm, well, I'm the hothead, so it was probably a good thing I didn't answer them. But Mr. DeCoursey certainly represents this board very well. So on a motion, if there's no further questions or comments, motion to receive by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Cunningham.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth? Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah, yes. Those materials will be.
What was that?
I really envy Mr. Dean, so I jumped again.
We will now go to, this is the first of two agenda items. Mr. Diggins is familiar with this, which will also appear at our second meeting in September. The this one, the first one being the one-day alcohol license application policy, which the board now has before it, that I don't know if Attorney Cunningham wants to sort of outline where he got us to a point of this draft. Unless, for some reason, I'm reading everything wrong, I think we need to receive it as a draft, have any conversation, get any corrections or suggestions, and do a final vote at the next meeting. But Attorney Cunningham, if you could. you could kind of bring us up to speed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think this was an effort by this, by this board, board staff, to provide the public more clarity. Just for general background, the Select Board acts as the local licensing authority for alcohol licenses, especially the one-day licenses. There's been some confusion over the years, which is not due to this board's actions. It's really the state legislature, section, chapter 138, section 14, that deals with one-day licenses, isn't real clear about how they apply the rule about the 30-day maximum that's allowed per applicant per year. There have been some questions that have been raised in other communities as well. I think Boston in particular has seen this where they've had, it's like the Greenway in Boston where applicants have, you know, applied for more than 30, and the brick-and-mortar restaurants that have been negatively impacted by that have raised some concerns. There have been some attempts to deal with that through state legislation. Those have not passed in the years since, last four or five years. So it's left local licensing authorities like this board kind of on their own to try and deal with this. I think this board's first effort at trying to provide some clarity to the public or into businesses about how this is going to work is, is clear in this draft that's before the board right now. I think section 18 in particular talks about, of the draft policy provides some clarity about how this board intends to apply the rule about 30-day limits per calendar year. So I think that's really the objective for that the board staff is, Select Board staff is engaged in with, with legal counsel. And hopefully, you know, whatever this board discusses tonight and changes that it deems necessary, we'll, we'll make those changes and bring it back before the board at the next meeting. But that was really the overarching objective, was to provide some clarity to the public and businesses and give this, you know, so what this board intends to do and how it intends to interpret chapter 138, section 14.
Thank you. And as I said, I know the board just, has just received this document. And through no one's fault, here in this room or a business in Arlington, it's just, legislation has sort of grown out of COVID, beer gardens, really ambiguous, and it just is what it is. And that's what we're left with. And similar to, you know, going forward in terms of treating everybody the same and fairly, and also going forward in terms of making sure, you know, some people may say, you know, what if you only save a dollar? And I would say, well, a dollar is five dimes and 10 nickels. You know, we need to really make sure that treating everyone the same, treating them fairly, but not overextending on them either. It's a delicate balance. And I can tell you that the Select Board Office and Town Council and Deputy Town Council, probably starting back in March, April, started having meetings discussing this and coming up with this draft document, along with the town manager overseeing it. So it's not something that, it just was pulled together. And it's taken a long time, a lot of work. So first, I'll ask if my colleagues, what I would anticipate is to look at the draft. If there's any questions of Town Council, any language that someone would like to add or clarify, the process for that should be to contact Town Council?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you.
And he can advise. And if that individual board member agrees with his interpretation of how to add something to it or whatever, we'll have that before us at our next meeting, which is the 29th, I believe. Any questions, comments from my colleagues? Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Attorney Cunningham, Mr. Feeney, Ms. Maher, for the work done on the proposed new application. And I know we also had the old, or the current form, which I think reprint, reprints the policy and has an application. And I just want to ask, the intent here now is to, this, these instructions will be freestanding, but it seems to me that we also should be updating our policy as well as, maybe as a separate exercise. Is that, is that what was contemplated?
Madam Chair, thank you. I think Mr. DeCoursey raises a good point. I do think that would be appropriate to do both at the same time.
Okay, yeah. So I have a couple of things. I'm not going to take time at the meeting tonight, but I'll move receipt of the, of the proposed applications. And there's some questions that I have that I'd reach out to Town Council on.
Is there a second?
A second.
Bye, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll do the same. I appreciate having some time to look at this. I just wanted to, I just thought this, I don't know if this is a good idea, but it occurs to me that, you know, we could do some publicity and solicit comment from the public on this before, because this is a revision. You know, some of this is a codifying of how the board has interpreted the statute and practices. And some of this may be a change or at least, you know, clarification. Would we, and I offer this as a, as a question that you, colleagues can respond to or just think about, you know, do we want to explicitly distribute this to stakeholders who take advantage of these, particularly more in a commercial venue, I'm thinking of the, not so much the individual, you know, Botmen Forest, Botmen Forest properties in town. And, you know, just to kind of look at this, give us a read and help us understand if there's any thing that's still vague or, you know, they may not, they may or may not like it, and we can do with that what we will. But just to kind of help us uncover any unintentional issues. And again, I'm just putting that out there and not suggesting of making a motion or anything.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Any further questions or comments?
I think this is a good first draft.
Thank you. To my left, I can't take credit for any of it. And I do, will have conversations with the Town Council regarding the board's discretion in determining and setting who an applicant is. But we'll go forward. That will be my 60-minute phone call with you. Bless you.
All the time needed, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion move receipt by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Hurd, seeing no further comment. Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
Thank you. We now go to discussion and approval, Town Manager Select Board Goals. Again, Town Manager's really gone above and beyond for the materials he presented at our goals meeting, as well as his staff, ancillary staff. I don't know if ancillary is a good word, respectful or not. Not only that, but he and I have had communications, which means conversations in several forms, since that meeting to incorporate all of the comments from the board, Mr. Helmut's regarding the CSO elimination language, Mr. DeCoursey's, and I'm leaving it to each individual member to, we've all read it all, but pay particular close attention to what they wanted, Mr. Diggins and Mr. Hurd with their, their suggestions. And I think he has encapsulated everything. Mr. Feeney, if you want to guide us into this?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So before you looks relatively similar to what we discussed, or that we took what I'll call a microscopic look at, at our meeting on August 21st, where we reviewed a number of these items in detail. We'll just note that version at the meeting we had was in color to help denote for the board as we moved through those goals, which over the course of two years, we had completed, those which were still in progress, those which still needed attention, but then those that we were adding new for the board and manager to work jointly on over the course of fiscal years '26 and '27. So the version before you this evening is a clean version with an attempt to capture all of the discussed revisions at our August 21st meeting. And if approved this evening, this would be the version that we post to the Select Board page of the website. But obviously, it's a lengthy document I would sort of call your attention to. As the chair noted, under Aleweif Brook, that had been a goal, frankly, for the, a few different iterations of this document. We just worked on the language a bit to update it, our advocacy efforts, but to also add a bit more detail to that specific goal as we've learned more as we continue to advocate for this every opportunity we get. One new one that we began a discussion on, under community planning and development, land use and economic development, is the last goal, which is entirely new, entitled surplus real property. There, the goal is to evaluate the logistics and any legal issues related to the potential disposal of town-owned parcels through a yard sale program. The term yard sale is stolen from the city of Boston, who conducted something similar for sort of smaller, non-developable, non-buildable parcels that had been the subject of tax-taking over the course of history that, you know, may have more benefit to, in a butter, and could also place them back on the tax rolls as they're currently nontaxable. One other thing that I would call the board's attention to is actually the very last goal, under information technology. For whatever reason, the version we reviewed on August 21st cut off the final goal, which was entitled Open Gov, to roll out expanded usage of the online permitting platform in other departments, prioritizing both the Select Board and Town Clerk's office. So we're looking to expand our usage of that platform beyond inspectional services, which we have used it to great success with, to allow contractors and homeowners to file for all their permits online and to no longer have to stop by Grove Street. So they can do it really 24/7. It has kept us more organized in the review process. It has led to better interdepartmental collaboration in terms of establishing workflows where reviewing bodies have the chance to weigh in before permits or certificates of occupancy are granted. Think the tree warden or engineering with regard to stormwater mitigation. So it has streamlined some of our operations. But it has also permitted us to do a lot more acceptance of online payments. But we've been limited to the use with inspectional services. And as we roll out and essentially pay for full deployment of that module, we will be able to work towards online permitting and licensure in both the Select Board's office and the Town Clerk's office. So think, you know, there's some, you know, 20-plus licenses and permits this board grants, but then also through the Town Clerk's office, a lesser number of permits, but a very high volume of dog licenses, vital records, including marriage certificates, birth certificates, et cetera. So hoping to create a more customer-friendly way for residents to access some of the town hall services, especially outside of business hours. And those, that's sort of the, aside from some minor grammatical tweaks or some words here and there, I think those are the most noteworthy changes that I wanted to highlight for the board this evening and the version that I've proposed for posting to the town's website pending board approval.
Thank you, Mr. Feeney. I will now turn to my colleagues. Motion to move approval?
Approve.
By Mr. Hurd. Is there a second? Mr. Diggins?
I'll second. And I just want to add a little something. That's okay. Because we, we had two hours and it really wasn't enough time, you know, because we had a lot to go through and we had a pretty hard stop. You know, we, and this is something that I'm going to propose that we add, you know, but just think about for the next iteration. When I look at the master plan, you know, and we're updating it now, the vision for it is Arlington's master plan envisions civic connections that encourage social interaction and foster a sense of community. And then it says that it's going to deal with all the sections that are in the master plan. And, and I guess that's a vision of sorts, you know. But I just think, you know, a vision should be more than that. And, and I think the town needs to decide whether it wants to be a hidden gem or a beacon, you know. I get excited at the thought of Arlington being a beacon. And when you say Arlington, I mean, people kind of really know, I mean, where Arlington is and think of it, you know, even more so than they think of Cambridge or Somerville, you know. But that requires, I mean, real intention to get there. But maybe that's not what people want, you know. But I think it would be good if we had, I mean, a conversation with the community about that. And I know it seems like I'm all about the conversation, but I am, you know. And I think to a certain extent, that could be, you know, a part of the master plan update process. I don't know to what extent that is. I mean, if it is, then, then that's great. We're done, you know. But if it isn't, then maybe we should think about doing something through town meeting in order for the town to have that conversation about what kind of vision it wants for itself, I mean, in various timeframes, you know, but certainly a longer timeframe, you know. So, so just something to think about for, for the next iteration, you know, of the, of the, of our goals, you know. So that's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. There are no further questions or comments. And a motion to approve by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Diggins. Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmut?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
And as Mr. Feeney stated, it will be up on the webpage promptly. We now go to agenda item 14, notification announcement, additional support for precinct meetings by the Select Board staff. I turn to our vice chair, Mr. Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as I said, I am all about the conversations, you know. So that's what the precinct meetings are all about. And I reached out to the vice chair and the Select Board members, see if we could provide a little more support, I mean, for residents and town meeting members who wanted to do more precinct meetings. Right now, the town supports, I mean, the fall, the fall and the, the spring precinct meetings. And that involves helping setting up in, on Zoom, and then posting them on the town's website and also sending out email notices about them. And I know that some precinct, some town meeting members have asked about having more precinct meetings. And we always say to them, you can do meetings whenever you want, you know, nothing stopping anyone from having a meeting. But, but the town isn't going to support it by putting any notices, I mean, on the town's website. So the Select Board staff has agreed that they would be willing, you know, to put notices on the town website, you know. And that's all we're going to ask to be done with these extra meetings at this point in time. And so, but that could end up being a lot, you know, because as you know, I mean, things come up and it might very well be, you know, that all of a sudden, we have the 10 precincts wanting to have precinct meetings and we'll need to get them listed on the town's website. And as we all know, when it rains, it pours, I mean, so that will likely happen when probably, you know, someone's out sick and we're getting ready, you know, for, for who knows what, you know. But, but at least we'll try, you know. And, and in terms of other support, then, then I am totally happy to support the people with, I mean, setting the meetings up on Zoom. And I talked with the town manager, and he says that in terms of notifying people, it won't be that we will send out regular email notices. Let me rephrase that. It's not like we will, as we, let me stop again. When we're doing the precinct meetings in the spring and the fall, as they are approaching town meeting, you know, and in the spring, I mean, and in the fall, I mean, as we are getting the precinct meetings lined up, usually on a weekly basis, I mean, there will be a notice letting people know about the town meeting, the precinct meetings that are, have been scheduled. And, and so we aren't going to do that, but we will maybe on a regular basis, maybe once every month or six weeks or so, we let people know that they can go to a place on the town's website, I mean, and then see a listing, I mean, of the precinct meetings. So, so that's it. I could have done this through new business, but essentially, I wanted to let folks know because it is taking some of the resources of the Select Board staff. I mean, and if you have any questions or concerns or ideas about how to improve this, I'm all ears now or later. Thank you.
Thank you. And the other reason, and this will require a vote to move approval, just to codify it by Mr. Diggins and seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Hurd. And just in the sense of, Mr. Diggins has done an awful lot of work with other people that you'll give credit to in building the precinct meetings back up to meeting regularly and now moving forward. And originally, the planning department was able to take on that task. But with success sometimes comes the need to change. And that's why, you know, the planning department no longer could do it. And as we all know, the Select Board's office has been going through... And as we all know, the Select Board's office has been going through, really redefining and adding some things to their job description. As we move forward, and, and, you know, we have different responsibilities and has set up a certain designation, and, you know, as this goes forward, and there's more meetings that need to be posted and need to get ready for and need materials, and then you have other admin things that sprout off of that, and I'm not complaining, and we're not going to be on the board for the next whatever amount of years, 30, 40, 50, 60, and we want this to continue on. So, it really needs to be defined as a task and job description and assigned to someone similar to before, we would, once in a while, have a banner request or a request to use a town-owned space, and now with, you know, Uncle Sam Plaza, Jefferson Cutter, Schwam Mill, the Arlington Reds, Road Races, Turkey Trucks, that really is another thing that not only the Select Board has to incorporate into our quote-unquote "job description," but, you know, we set the policy and we, you know, make the decisions, and it's the town manager and the Select Board's office that oversees it. So, I commend them for doing that, and as I said to Mr. Diggins and all of us, anything we can do to assist in that. And I really hope we do see, I was at a meeting this weekend with Carol Lutowski from Arlington List, that she gets a group of people together every month, and one of the things they said was, you know, being able to connect into Arlington, but also they'd like to connect more and find other ways to do that. And we do have the Civic Engagement Program that Mr., is that, am I saying that correctly? Is that citizens?
Civic Academy.
Civic Academy, that Mr. DeCoursey and Mr. Helmoth have gotten rave reviews representing this board. And so, and the other thing I had mentioned was your precinct meetings, and I were excited about that. So, if there are any further questions and comments, Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, and I appreciate the willingness to provide additional information. I just want to be sure, though, precinct meetings are not subject to the open meeting law, is that right?
Attorney Cunningham?
They're not.
Okay, all right. Good, because I didn't want to be put in a position where we're doing something to accommodate town meeting members, and then all of a sudden, our staff is running afoul of the open meeting law. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so we're voting to codify this, I think, I heard. So, I just want to be real clear, we're voting to approve, and this is, this is only posting these extraneous meetings to the town website and nothing else for, for the Select Board staff?
That's correct.
I gave your heads nodding, sorry.
No, that's correct.
Ms. Mahan?
Yeah, okay, thank you. The only thing I'd say, you know, that's fine with me. I, I do feel cautious about the Select Board moving too closely to bind itself to town meeting operations. I'm a great believer in the separation of those branches of government. So, I mean, more than we already do. I mean, the Select Board has obviously a statutory role under the Town Manager Act to set the agenda, to publish the warrant, you know, and to do the things we do. But I think that, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with this, and I'm glad that we're not having Select Board staff, like, participate in Zoom meetings and all of that, because I think that, you know, we, I want to let town meeting feel like, feel the independence that it has from this body and that we keep those lines clear as they are now. So, I'm comfortable with that. But then you got the caution I was feeling, and I appreciate the, the continued discussion to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that, it, it won't only be town meeting members that can schedule precinct meetings, so anyone can. And it'll, and it'll be up to us to make it clear, and me in particular, I would say at this point, to make it clear, like, it has to be about government or town-related business, you know, and, and the whole goal of this is to just get people communicating with each other more, primarily town meeting members, so, I mean, you're right about that, it does have a town meeting focus, I mean, but trying to avoid situations where we, we have some issue and, and usually in town meeting, and people go, I had no idea this was coming up, you know. So, so this will be a slow build, I mean, where hopefully there will be a lot of them happening more frequently, but it just gives another avenue for people to communicate with each other and find out about what's going on in town and have conversations about that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, my thing keeps going offline, online, offline, so.
Do you need power?
No, no, I have to keep logging on as town of Arlington guest. Okay, so I apologize for all that noise. Any further questions, comments on a motion by Mr. Diggins, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmoth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Five, zero vote.
That brings us to agenda item 15, Discussion Health Peak, Cambridge Pointe, Alwife Development, MEPA Environmental Notification Form Draft Comments. Mr. Helmoth?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion, really out of an abundance of caution due to my employment in the state legislature. This letter includes the CC of our legislative delegation, and I think just to keep things as clean as possible, given my restrictions of my employment, I will recuse by turning off my video and audio for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. And again, this is the second agenda item that's on tonight. We have a draft of possible environmental notification ENF draft comments on the Health Peak development, the first of four developments in Cambridge, and the quadrangle, which is going to be about $4.6 billion in total for the developments. I will say two things in terms of comments I'll follow up that maybe add a little bit more around, and we discussed this at our goals meeting, the environmental justice component of it, which is also part of the law around these types of projects, as well as the part in the draft letter regarding reclaimed water use as a practical waste water mitigation effort. So, but I'll have those conversations with town council, so that, and it will be distributed to my colleagues before the next meeting when we take the vote. But I do want to, and I'm going to, crap, sorry, bring this up under, I'm trying to pull it up so I can be concise, bring this up into new business when Mr. Helmoth joins us. But I do want everyone to know, first, this will hopefully be a boilerplate for our comments on the next three projects out of Cambridge, which will affect the Arlington border. Second of all, the Cambridge Health and Environmental Subcommittee of the City Council met last week. There's four members of the City Council on that, Patty Nolan is, is the chair of it, and she gave a brief report of that is, I just, just so my colleagues know that we're not just going through, is she is saying that she and the City Council, Cambridge City Council will be focusing on combined sewer separation efforts. She gives a report on the meeting on September 9th with members of Save the Alwife Brook, with the Charles River Watershed, and with our Mystic River Watershed, which was very informative, and they certainly, she said appreciated the very detailed presentation. As a result of this, there was a motion passed by the Cambridge City Health and Environment Subcommittee that asked their city staff to present a matrix of options along with a cost-benefit analysis and a way forward to eliminate CSOs, which is something a lot of us have been working on for a long time. And then they also talked about putting together a commission or working group to do some outreach regarding these four projects, including, they mentioned about Arlington. And I did have informal conversations, saying that I would love to be everywhere at all times and certainly would like to be there, but I think it is most important, it's, from what I got from the Cambridge City Council, is that they want to include Arlington in that, and not that he's committed or said yes, but I feel the town manager or somebody else he designates from his staff, if Arlington only gets one person integral to work with the city of Cambridge on these four major, $4.6 billion developments, it really should be the town manager or somebody at his discretion. And then two of us at any time can go when they do request an elected official. And it doesn't have to be me all the time, I think it's better, and I think the reason we've been effective is, you know, when I first started out on this back in early 1990, I don't mean to be negative, but it was just me and Clarissa Rowe, when she came on the board, added on to it, and I think now the, certainly Cambridge and Somerville, which their city council has also started to address this, and Mike Rodamaca gave them what for at MWRA advisory meeting regarding the Somerville CSO, but we won't go there. But I think part of the success, because for the longest time, people were saying, you know, you can't do it, it's too expensive, and the Charles River Watershed and Mystic River, and the Cambridge City Council agreed, you know, look at the Boston Clean Harbor Act, which the Alwife does fall under as a Class B waterway. You know, people in the beginning lamented about the high cost, and it's not going to be worth it, but look at all the economic development, as well as the public health issues that have come out of it. So, that's a long thing, I apologize, but I say that in the spirit of, because I, I do take seriously all my colleagues, but I know, especially with you, Mr. Diggins, in terms of, you know, when people or anyone, citizens or myself, ask you to vote something, you know, it's not just a vote to, you know, well, it's something that really doesn't have a chance, or it's a feel-good thing just to do it, and we don't think about it again. This really is, Arlington should have ENF comments to this, and it should be, and because of this board's unanimity on this issue, as well as getting the town manager and/or his staff in on these conversations, this really is an important thing. So, I would ask my colleagues, unless they had anything they wanted to bring up tonight, to go over the draft language. I do want to talk to town council about the environmental justice component, as well as the wastewater reuse mandate. And Cambridge did talk about the gray water legislation that's been in the State House for the fourth or fifth year now, sponsored by Local 12, the Plumbers Association, but it looks like it's actually moving along. And Governor Healy, as we all read, not only put in her environmental platform that she got out recently regarding eliminations of CSO, SSOs, but also said about gray water, taking that water instead of just getting rid of it, reusing it for, you know, toilet water, not drinking. So, sorry, I went along on that. Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to mention the, what this is in terms of, this is the executive office of the Energy and Environmental Affairs, receiving comment, public comment through the end of this month, so the board would have an opportunity to come back in the next meeting and still be timely with its submission if it wanted to do this letter. I think this is a MEPA review, which is the Environmental Policy Act. As the chair correctly notes, environmental justice is a component of that. I think that that could be fleshed out a little bit better in the letter, I think that's a very good suggestion. So, I'd be happy to work with the chair to include some of that language to add to this. If there are other board members that want to reach out to my office individually, I'd be happy to include any revisions that the board members might have, so we can have that before the board at the next meeting.
Okay. And unless anyone has any comments, we'll move on. And I don't know if anyone can text Mr. Helmoth, or maybe he doesn't need to come on for the last two. I mean, he's not, he's really under the weather, but, yeah, but he's been joining us anyways. So, we will now go to correspondence. Oh, Mr. Helmoth, thank you, you're back. We missed you.
Thank you, I missed you too.
I really did. Correspondence received, update on testing of Arlington High's new turf fields from the chair and vice chair of the High School Building Committee, a correspondence from Jeff Thielman, recommendations for the order of conditions process, and that's from him individually. And number 18, Summer Street traffic concerns and request. This is a request I got from the Facebook Arlington List, which has about 20,000 subscribers, most are current, in some form, or members of Arlington. And the request came up about the RRFB rectangular rapid flashing beacon, if that could be employed up at Summer Street, and I went through the list that we approved, and it's not on there, and I went through the list that we pre-approved, which means the traffic counts have already been done and they're in the waiting, and this particular area up by, I'd like to call it something else, McLennan Park, and then other people made requests about, you know, the speed humps and, and other things like that. So, instead of copying and pasting the 53 comments, which came to about seven requests, I just took the first one that started it from Tess Bryant, just to get it in the pipeline, which I would, instead of referring it to Tac, if it's okay, would refer that to Mr. Feeney? Okay. So, first, a motion to receive, correspondence received by?
I'll move.
Mr. Hurd, is there a second? Mr. DeCoursey, we're going to shake it up a little. Any other questions or comments?
Well, I, I, I read the, the stuff related to the, the field, I mean, I mean, my mouth dropped, you know, so, so it's like, I mean, what are we supposed to do with that?
If you're referencing the individual correspondence from Mr. Thielman?
Yeah.
I did have a conversation, and if anyone thinks I stray, or I know Mr. Feeney attended the High School Building Department meetings, and that's a separate letter. So, if I misspoke on, misspeak on anything, please correct me, but Mr. Thielman just said, in, in, in going through the process, in terms of, he wanted to make it better moving forward for the Conservation Commission and its participation. I think the end result, Mr. Thielman said that, as he noted in his letter, one particular member really added some, a lot of, some extra work, but also some testing that wasn't germane, and was actually brand-new testing that, I'm not sure where the individual member found this, maybe New York Times, or some new testing that the town was forced to do, and it cost us about $50,000, $60,000, which someone may say on a multimillion-dollar project isn't a lot of money, but I'd rather spend $50,000, $60,000 on something that's worthwhile. And to look, as, as Mr. Thielman said, you know, a positive on this is we have, the town has by far gone above and beyond and been able to demonstrate that the artificial turf tire rubble, what is it, Mr. Feeney?
Tire crumb rubber.
Tire crumb rubber. There can be no question, not only for Arlington, but for any city or town in the state, we now have it documented because of the strenuous and sometimes unnecessary and somewhat costly exercise by one member, according to Mr. Thielman. So, that's a positive. But just, you know, moving forward, and he said, he said after this process was over, he was going to document it because he thinks everyone can learn from an experience, and he wanted to make clear, he was speaking as an individual, not as a, the chair and vice chairs of the High School Building Committee took a vote on the first letter, the second letter is just for him, and he's available to speak individually with any member of the board to go. But I think what he was, and he just wanted it noted, is moving forward in terms of Conservation Commission, and we all should, you know, similar to us when we do our job, and the check and balance for us is if we, you know, our family allows us to run again, and if the residents of this town decide to vote us in again. So, you know, maybe just moving forward, this just stays on file, and, and that's what it does right now, it's documenting. So, I went a little long, but that was the conversation with him. So, does that answer? Probably beyond the answer.
Well, no, 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 no.
Do you have any urges to say to me?
Well, no, it's just that, I mean, it is public, I mean, and so, I mean, I think when someone brings something on that level to, to us, I'm, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to just let it sit, because it, it seems like it's a cry for help, you know, and, and there are some pretty weighty words thrown around in there, and I know that if I threw those words around and I brought them to a board like this, I mean, letting it sit is not the desired outcome that I want, but, and like I said, since it's out here in the public, you know, I'm, I'm having a public conversation, I'm just, but I don't know what to do next. I mean, so, so I guess at this point, you know, someone's going to be getting a call from me, and I'll be talking to them to find out, like, what more we should or should not do.
Yeah, I know, I would encourage everyone to speak to Mr. Thielman, because he was very forthcoming in his conversation, but I don't feel comfortable relaying some of the really strong, salient points, because I didn't ask him, and I would have paid more attention if I said to him, okay, I want to speak for you, you know, because I don't want to, I mean, the letter A, as you said, speaks for itself, and B, just moving forward, I can tell you in terms of my year as chair this year, regarding a particular individual of the Conservation Commission, I will say I share, individually, Mr. Thielman's concerns and frustrations, and, and I'll stop there, and maybe that's what that is moving forward.
I know, thank you, thanks for.
Mr. DeCoursey?
And I just want to say something in general on this, and I think, you know, what we, one of the things we saw from this correspondence is there are various boards and commissions throughout town that have an ability to ask for more testing or more consultant work, and for our town that have an ability to ask for more testing or more consultant work, and I think this just demonstrates, before you ask that, whether it's a private party or a public party, you be very careful what you're asking for, because whether it's the private party, or in this case, it came out of the project, it sounds like there were some funds, according to Mr. Thielman, that were expended that may not have had to have been expended. And it's two sides to every story, and, you know, it's not up to us, but I think it's, I think it is a warning that you have a duty as a commission, whether it's the Zoning Board of Appeals, whether it's Redevelopment Board, when you ask somebody to perform more testing, make sure you know what you're asking them to do. And if there are inconsistencies, and that's what was alleged here in the testing, so there'd be some inconsistencies developed, so there'd be no way to pass some of these tests, you've got to think long and hard, because $50,000 is not a trivial amount. Having said that, I mean, I don't think we, it's our, we got the letter, Conservation Commission got the letter, I think it's up to them to look at it, to see, you know, what they think going forward, they can learn from this experience. I think, you know, throughout the two letters, I think there's very, for the community, there's a very important statement at the end, that we, meaning the High School Building Committee, is placing a very safe turf infill product at Arlington High School. And they went through a long process, we had a lot of meetings from it, and based on everything they did, I think as a building committee, they feel very comfortable with that, and I think that's, that's good news. I think some of these other issues have to be flushed out, and, you know, maybe there'll be a response from the Conservation Commission to Mr. Thielman and the Building Committee, maybe there won't, but I think that be careful is what I take away from this for the future, and hopefully there's a learning experience from that.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, motion to receive, correspondence received by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
We'll now go to new business. Welcome back. Ms. Mar?
The only new business I have is that Town Day is this Saturday from 10:30 to 4:30.
Excellent. And the very busy Attorney Cunningham, please pass on, I meant to say during the Goals Discussion, Deputy Town Counsel Jacqueline Munson was very helpful, as well as helpful in her follow-up of Mr. DeCoursey's additions to the goals and objectives, presenting something very new that we had not, and she certainly encapsulated and helped us get that four-hour meeting done in two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This isn't new business, but the Deputy Town Counsel is always very helpful, so thank you.
Any new business, Attorney Cunningham?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Our town manager, Mr. Feeney?
No new business, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
No new business.
Mr. Diggins?
I think it's going to be sunny on Saturday, maybe a little bit cooler, but I'm sure there'll be a spot shower right over Arlington Center that will just dump, because everyone's expecting rain, so anyways.
It'll be fine. Mr. Helmuth?
Thank you, I just want to tag on to Ms. Mar's comment and offer my really appreciation for whoever was responsible for the interactive map, and I think this was probably a team effort, and a lot of people, but if you go to the ArlingtonMA.gov and click on Town Day, there's a really glorious interactive map where you can see all the booths, and I'm so proud that we have 250 of them. And you can search for a booth, you can mouse over and see what's going to be on them, and I think it's a terrific average role service to the public, so I encourage people to see that. If our administrator or Mr. Feeney wants to offer public credit for the responsible parties, feel free, but otherwise just know that it's, I really was impressed by it.
Ms. Mar, you want to?
That's the doing of Katie Luksai, she's been instrumental in helping with the interactive map, so, thanks to her.
Yes, and the select board also, a lot of vendors appreciated the fact that we're almost there. We're not in Open Gov yet, Mr. Manager, but when we will be, it'll be great, which will be soon. But they did appreciate, along with the interactive map, you know, one of the things that was frustrating for them previously is when they would email in a request, and they'd have to wait a month or two, and wonder, "Do they even get my request?" But the staff also has set up that, you know, you get the automatic confirmation email back. Mr. Hurd and Mr. Diggins as well aware of this, so... Any other new business, Mr. Helmuth, I'm sorry?
No, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
I'm glad to see you out of the hockey rink for a little while, Mr. Hurd?
For a couple hours. No, just, I want to thank everyone that was involved in putting together Town Day, technically on a committee, but 3:30 on Thursdays is very difficult for me, as proven. But, you know, it is, we say this every year, people don't understand how much work is involved in putting together Town Day. Literally, the next Town Day committee will likely meet the Thursday after this Town Day and go forward planning the next year. So, I do want to thank Mr. Diggins, Ms. Mar, and all the town staff that do so much work to put that together. Note that we do have the fireworks again on Town Night, which is now the day of Town Day. We did that a couple years ago to streamline the event, but also with the idea that it will kind of, in between, will, we invite people to patronize many of our amazing restaurants, and both in the center and East Arlington and the Heights, so make it a full-day celebration of all the town has to offer. So, I look forward to it.
Thank you. And my somewhat repeat, new business, and I am going to, after tonight, I'm going to forward, this is a City Council update from our colleague Patty Nolan over in Cambridge, I'm going to forward it to Ms. Mar, or forward it to my colleagues, just so you can read everything. But I did want to, on the CSO issue, in terms of, the Cambridge City Council, their Subcommittee, the Health and Environment Subcommittee, which contains four City Council members from Cambridge, spearheaded by Patty Nolan, they had a meeting on September 9th with representatives of Save the Alwife Brook, Mystic River Watershed, and Charles River Watershed, and Ms. Nolan gives a report back on that, where she said she also brought in, besides her colleagues, employees of Cambridge City DPW to focus on, oh my lord, I want to read it to you real quick. Oh, here it is. "To present a plan on eliminating, present a plan with a metric of options along with a cost-benefit analysis and a way forward to eliminate CSOs." So, that's very encouraging. I was saying before, back in the 90s, when I started out on going out there and banging the drum with the then MWRA, when they were asking for the variants to be allowed to continue to dump gaga and everything else in the brook for a total elimination, and it was just poo-pooed, and no way, no one, Cambridge and Somerville won't agree to it. Well, we're now getting there, and I really feel, and I'm not just saying this to say it, that I think it's because the state, but especially Cambridge and Somerville, along with its residents and groups like the Watersheds, Charles River Mystic, see that the town and its leaders are really, you know, before I was kind of out there by myself, and then when Ms. Rowe came on the board, she joined in it, but now we, on this particular issue, public health, and everything beyond environmental injustice, environmental justice issues and others going forward, and this is around the quadrangle, four projects in Cambridge that are going to be developed at $4.6 billion totally moving forward, but Cambridge is ready to now talk, and they have it in writing, and they indicated Ms. Nolan's going to the next full Cambridge City Council meeting to speak to the council, to ask them to pass a motion about coming up with options, a cost-benefit analysis, and choosing which option to move forward to begin to eliminate, separate CSOs. And the other thing was, a conversation came up about, and it's, you'll be able to read this when I have Ms. Mar forward to everyone, but the Cambridge City Council has talked about working partnerships with the adjacent communities, Belmont and Arlington, and I had an informal conversation about that, sort of solidifying or codifying or whatever, not legitimizing, but I may declare that if there is one seat at the table moving forward, working with Cambridge to discuss this really important issue, it should be the town manager and/or his designee, and I already started speaking with him about adding another thing to his platter. But also, they indicated that the council would like to, you know, hear from their colleagues, us, at various times moving forward on these different projects, so we all can, you know, take turns. It's great to see my face, but they'd rather see you guys, I think, no, but anyways. So, that's a very positive thing, because for a long time, it was close to impossible. So, that's my new business, that's good news from Cambridge City Council, and the same thing is happening over in Somerville. I will forward, right now, Patty Nolan's release from Cambridge City Council Subcommittee meeting, so you can all read it. That's all for my new business, so I'll take a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, no further, oh, not debatable, Attorney Cunningham?
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helmuth?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahon?
Yes.
Five zero vote.
Thank you.